Now we'll go on with the public hearings. The special first one for, uh, who is that? Hickory Flats, Tomlin Hill, out of C has been withdrawn. And the next special use permit is Lee County Board of Supervisors will have the public hearing on Tuesday, July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, about thirty P M. In the General District Court Room of the Lee County Courthouse located in John Wick, Virginia to solicit input on special use permit to St. Charles Health Council Incorporated. Doing business at Stone Mountain Health Services has applied for a special use permit to allow building data center in a B C village commercial district property consists of approximately two point zero seven acres and is located at one oh eight Fisher Road, just off Highway U S fifty-eight, Alknap, near Ben Hur. Is there anyone here to speak for that?
I think I'll speak first. Richard Johnson, the Director for the County. On behalf of the Plan Commission up here tonight to inform you of their recommendation that they made on June the twenty-first after holding their own public hearing for this one, give you a little bit of backstory into this application. This is actually a by right use for the specific use that Stone Mountain Health has applied for. The only reason that they actually had to apply for the special use permit is because the building is in excess of three thousand square feet. And the Plan Commission determined that with this being a less intensive use than the banquet previously there, they recommended that this be approved in some time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I'm now completed. I'm here on behalf of Stone Mountain.
Sorry.
I'm here on behalf of Stone Mountain Health Services. I'm having to answer any questions if they have about use of. Just not going to be a data mining operation. So I ask you if we're going to start mining Bitcoin, that's not important.
I don't have any, man.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion on this special use permit.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. I hear second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify the saying hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, this is departmental reports. I trust you've all went over those. Next thing is public expression. Anybody want to do it? Do your public expression please to come to the mic, state your name, your address. You'll have thirty minutes.
Howdy. My name is Josh DeYoung. Address is two nine one Blackberry Hollow Road in Roseville, Virginia, two four two eight one. My time starts now.
Yes.
I'm here today to discuss concerns that the community has over a home business slaughterhouse being built in our backyard. This slaughterhouse business being built in Roseville, Virginia will not benefit the community. I have, however, compiled a list of the negative impacts that the community will feel. General cleanup, leftovers, guts, blood, et cetera, smell, contamination of the local soils and waters due to wastewater which includes stomach contents, feces, urine, blood, lint, fat and lard, goose meat, undigested food, carcasses, microbial pathogens, pharmaceuticals and disinfectants, an increase of rats, vultures, flies and other scavengers, increase of sound pollution due to equipment and animal distress, possible conflict of interest with licensing and permits within the health department. It's not USDA approved. Who is going to check to make sure that everything is done properly and safely and that our local environment won't be impacted? There's going to be an impact on the roads. Our roads are swamped, almost single lane. They cannot handle commercial traffic. There's no good ingress and egress onto the property that will allow trailers for animals, livestock, as well as increased traffic. Should a catastrophic event happen and them not being able to fix it or stop it due to limited funds and insurance. The church will be heavily impacted as it is being built extremely close to it. Lower property value to surrounding properties due to these issues. The community has banded together. We have obtained over two hundred and forty signatures in less than a week for every tissue. It's actually up to almost three hundred now. We ask that construction be paused while more information is gathered as the community just learned about it less than a week ago. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else? Wish to address the board?
Mr. Chairman, can I, Richard, just speak to him just for three minutes, you know, in about a minute, if I would like that, about this slaughterhouse?
I actually don't have that documentation in front of me, Your Honor. If anyone here that has that concern would like to reach out to my office directly, I'd be happy to discuss the permitting process and everything with you. We're here eight to four thirty, close to couple one every day for lunch.
Anyone else? We'll move on. Call the public expression. Next thing on the agenda is approval of minutes.
Mr. Chairman, in the minutes from June twentieth, page nine, speaker was Ellen Kelly, E M A. Page twenty-seven, I think the motion was that we advertise it in the month of July. Assistant County Minister of Transportation specified that. Then page three of the June twenty-eighth minutes, it says that we were talking about reducing it by ten cents on airplane tax. It was two ten cents. Other than that, that was all I saw on.
That a motion with the corrections?
I made a motion to approve subject to those corrections.
Have a motion, I hear second.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor signify the saying hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Was that for both?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Next thing is County Ministry reports that payroll warrants have been issued. Next is dispersals.
Make a motion to favor bill.
Have a motion, I hear second.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? If none, all in favor signify the saying hi.
Hi.
Any opposed?
Hi.
Motion carries. Next is delegations. How do you pronounce that?
Revita.
Revita.
Yes, sir.
I didn't want to mispronounce it. But Courtney Loff is Program Director.
I'm not sure if you all have my packets. Do you care if I pass them out?
No, that's fine.
Okay. You were better.
Thank you.
Dane, I'll get you on tape.
So my name is Courtney Lawson. I am the Program Director at Regeta Recovery. I have with me Adrianian Sacker. He is our site medical director. So just a little bit about us. We are an office-based addiction treatment facility. We have three in Virginia and five in Tennessee. So I'll skip on. I won't read slide to slide for you, but we are CARF accredited. So we are, our CARF status communicates that Revita is unconditionally committed to quality, to continuous improvement into well-being of our patients and other stakeholders. So Revita received accreditation as a permanent provider of office-based opioid intervention services. So what that entails, that each patient that comes to us with or treatment sees a care coordinator, and then they also see a counselor, and then they see a provider. So we do participate in medication-assisted treatment, which is all evidence-based. But I will let Adrian take it over from here, and he will discuss more about that.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you all for having us today. My name is Adrianian Sacker. I'm the Site Medical Director with Revita Recovery Center in Duffield, Virginia. We're just here today to increase awareness of our program, to become more active and involved in the community, that we can better help to support our community and make this a safer place for everyone. If you'll look on page eight, a couple of things I wanted to hit on is it talks about some of the additional programs we have at Revita that helps to separate us from a lot of the other programs in our area. Hepatitis C is one of the major public threats to our community. I've worked in this addiction, in addiction treatment now for over six years and had hundreds of patients who have been diagnosed with hepatitis C. I would always refer them out to outside providers to get the treatment done. I could count on one hand how many of them actually followed through with those appointments, successfully completed the treatment as they needed to. And seeing this as a major threat to the safety and health of our community and the need for someone to be doing something about it, we ourselves are now treating hepatitis C in our offices. So each person who is infected with hepatitis C spreads that infection to twenty other people within the first three years of getting infected. So it just goes to show how rapidly these infections can spread. There are some newer generation antiviral medications which are highly effective, covered by insurances, we do those treatments there. This next graph, it shows the Leno Wisco Health District, which you all are very aware of. It highlights the chronic hepatitis C infections that were cases in twenty nineteen. In twenty nineteen, I believe there was four hundred and sixty-nine new cases. If you'll notice, it kind of peaked, it would kind of drop in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. That's not because there was less infections, that was simply because there was less testing being done, because that's when you had COVID happen, everybody transitioned to telehealth visiting counters, people wasn't coming into the office to get their blood taken to assess for the diagnosis of hepatitis C. So I think once we see patients are going back into the offices, these numbers are going to be much higher than they was in twenty nineteen. On the next slide, slide ten, it talks about some additional programs we have at Revita that kind of separates us from other offices. We offer the extended release of putanias buprenorphine injections. You know, a challenge with buprenorphine sublingual formulations is sometimes there's concerns for adherence to the regimen and misuse of the medication and such. We offer a once monthly injection that patients are able to receive. It goes in the abdomen and force the depot slowly breaks out and releases throughout the course of, they get the injection every twenty-eight days, but really it lasts much longer than that.
What's the cost of that versus?
It's much more expensive, but it is covered by Virginia Medicaid, it's covered by commercial insurances, it's covered by Medicare. There are many, many challenges at being able to provide that service to the patient population. We are one of the very few programs in our region that does that. We saw the need for it, we did what we needed to to tackle those challenges, and we really, we actually apologized to the program at our Duffield site, and now it's being spread across our organization, Virginia, Tennessee.
What's the criteria for getting the injection versus the sublingual? Is everybody eligible for that injection, or do you have to have some higher risk of abuse?
That's great. That's a very good question. So I will say the most ideal candidate for the injection is someone who is long-term stable on buprenorphine, and they're just tired of taking it every day, or they don't like going to the pharmacy to get it filled, they don't want it carried around in their pocket, they hate the taste of it, maybe then the toxin causes them to get headaches or nausea. But they have to be on eight to twenty-four milligrams of the sublingual product for at least seven days, and then you can put them on the injection. But with that being said, yes, any patient could be a candidate for the injection. We try to not like force patients onto it. We try to use motivational reviewing techniques to kind of guide them towards why that would be good for them. I've had many patients who had attempted treatment with us multiple times in the past and always fell out, because you know, they really had severe polysubstance use disorders that struggled with adherence to the regimen. Those patients have now successfully completed hepatitis C treatment and are continue to engage in our program over a year later with injection.
So Medicaid will pay for it regardless?
Medicaid pays for it regardless. There are no insurance stipulations on it. FDA approval is someone is on eight to twenty-four milligrams of the sublingual product for at least seven days. So yeah, it's a great thing. We also offer the extended release now Trakzone. The brand name for that is a bit drawn, you know, that has primarily can be used for alcohol use disorder as the best merits, really helps to reduce binge drinking. It can be used for opioid use disorder, so there are some challenges, and there's some literature that shows that it can be helpful for methamphetamine use disorder. So we offer that at our office as well. This next slide, it kind of gives a little bit of a background on addiction, really what it is, because it's kind of hard to understand at times. But addiction is a primary chronic relapsing brain disease. It causes a lot of structural and functional changes in areas of the brain. And when you look at addiction, you're trying to understand like, how do I see if someone has addiction? You know, the hallmark of addiction is when people continue to use substances or engage in harmful behaviors to spot negative consequences. You know, it's easy to look at our patients and be like, why do you keep doing this? You lost your family, you lost your car, you lost your house, if you have a criminal record, you're going to jail. Why do you keep doing this? That is addiction, that's what it does. So one of the hallmarks of addiction is role impairment, like they can't be a father, they can't, you know, be the mother that they want to be, the grandmother, you know, the child that can help their older parents because they struggle with addiction. I put in here some slides that kind of talks about the trends that we're seeing across the United States today when it comes to overdose trends. If you'll notice, the, this is on slide, page six, slide twelve, you will notice the red is the end March increase in overdose rates from August of twenty twenty-one to August of twenty twenty-two. This is not just opiates or opioids. You know, there's a term going around now like the opioid epidemic, as in people get hooked on opiates and they live this long life abusing opiates, and it's really misleading. Today, what we're facing is an overdose crisis. People are dying at alarming rates because of the contamination of illicit drug supply with fentanyl. So if you'll notice here, like even drugs such as cocaine, methamphetamine, multiple other substances, overdose rates have skyrocketed, and it's not necessarily just because of the cocaine or just because of the methamphetamine, it's the fentanyl that's contaminated. We have many patients now in our area who use methamphetamine regularly as cause of their fentanyl. This next slide, it kind of talks about the overdose deaths. So you will see here in the year of twenty twenty-one, there was a hundred and six thousand six hundred ninety-nine people who died of the drug overdose in our country. These numbers unfortunately have continued to rise, and they're going to for a period of time. It kind of separates the yellow line and the dark line between males and females. The next one talks about the ages of people and the substances that they had used. If you'll notice this blue line, which will be slide fourteen on page seven, that is fentanyl. You know, so you can see how it just markedly blows everything else out of the water. Would be page seven, slide fourteen, and everything else is down there, but the blue line is fentanyl. Let me see here. So on page eight, slide fifteen, it kind of talks about opioids in general. The amount of overdose deaths involving opioids was eighty thousand. So you'll see that the total overdose deaths was a hundred and six thousand, eighty thousand of those was opioids, the majority of that was fentanyl. The next slide, it kind of talks about the ones that are prescription opioids, and you'll find that a very small minority of that is prescription opioids that people are overdosing and dying on. This is illicit counterfeit fentanyl that's in our communities. You know, years ago, when people suffered an overdose or they overdosed, they knew what they were doing was very risky. They knew that they were rolling the dice, and this could be something that could kill them. Today, that's not the case. Many people who are dying of overdose and, or who are suffering an overdose and dying or living through it, they had no idea what they were using was fentanyl. There's a lot of counterfeit pressed pills in our community, so it's becoming very bad. Let me see here. The next slide, it shows, slide seventeen on page nine, it talks about overdose deaths due to heroin continue to decrease, and it's not because people are actually seeking out heroin, it's because the heroin that they're using has no heroin, and it is pure fentanyl. So that's another challenge with that. This next slide, it talks about the challenges with psychostimulants. Of the fifty-three thousand four hundred ninety-five people who passed away in twenty twenty-one of a stimulant-related overdose, you can see the majority of those, this yellow line actually had synthetic opiates or opioids, including fentanyl in their system. Kind of run through these other ones, but I think you get the general gist of it, fentanyl is contaminated, illicit drug supply, and other type of overdose, so it's going to skyrocket. You'll see on page twelve, it talks about on figure, let me see here. We'll just go ahead and move on to page thirteen, slide twenty-five, it talks about factors that which contribute to substance use disorder. There are a lot of different factors, and we know now that genetics is one of them. You know, genetics, the particular brain structure of people when they're from, the time that they're born, psychological influences, people that have underlying mental health issues like anxiety, depression, PTSD, schizophrenia, those people are much more likely to suffer from substance use. That's why at our facility, you know, we really treat the whole person, we're just not treating addiction. You know, we treat the underlying mental health issues, underlying medical issues as well as hepatitis C and addiction. Many of our patients, they have no primary care doctor, they have no mental health provider, they've been blackballed from a entire large medical systems because really is a result of their addiction and behavior that comes along with it. Age of first use is a big factor, environmental influences. You know, you are raised in a home with a mother and father who uses drugs, you're much more likely to use drugs. Many of my parents, many of my patients, the first time they ever used drugs, it was with their mother and father. It was with their mother or father who injected them with drugs at a very young age. You know, these are things that we see every day. And then adverse childhood experiences. This slide that I really like, that's very eye-opening to me, that I want to really hit home with you all, is on page thirteen, slide twenty-six. What this slide does is it compares individuals who have an opioid use disorder, and it compares different approaches to treating your opioid use disorder. So you will see the red line, the blue line, and the green line. So the scale on the left is the amount of returns to illicit opiate and opioid use, right? So you'll see individuals who are using medications as long with other supportive services in the recovery, such as counseling, care coordination, all the services we provide at our program, their rates of return to illicit opiate opioid use are drastically lower than individuals who are not engaging in opioid agonist treatment, ones that are going to facilities that don't offer opioid agonist treatment. You can see the green line is the amount of returns to illicit opiate opioid use for those individuals. The next slide, on page fourteen, slide twenty-seven, this was a really eye-opening slide to me, and I came across it recently, but what it does is it compares mothers who are pregnant mothers who are diagnosed with opioid use disorder, and it compared their reduction of risk of an overdose if they were engaged in treatment. So you will find that for a pregnant mother with opioid use disorder who stays engaged in medications for opioid use disorder treatment for forty weeks, they're at a ninety-seven percent decreased risk of suffering an overdose. Even just ten weeks of addiction treatment for that pregnant mother decreased the risk by fifty-seven percent. You know, these slides are not things that I came up with. These are from the Journals of Addiction Medicine, NADA, the National Institute of Drug Use, these are all area peer-reviewed evidence-based slides. I wanted to kind of end with a generalized treatment philosophy of how we embody or treat our patients, and it really hits home with the fact that a substance use disorder is a chronic medical condition, and it responds best when treated with evidence-based practice, patient-centered comprehensive care. It's important that treatment attends to the multiple needs of the individual, not just their substance use or their addiction. We're addressing their underlying medical and mental health issues as well. It's very, very important. We really hit home with the importance of a multi-disminery treatment team. That's why we are preferred office-based addiction treatment with the Virginia Medicaid ARDS program, as well as one of the, the only provider, the only office-based addiction treatment provider in southwest Virginia, that's CARF-credentia, accredited with CARF. Remaining in treatment for the longest period of time has the best outcomes. You know, so a lot of people, they see addiction as, you know, like they're struggling, they start at the start line, and then they cross the finish line, and they're cured. And research shows us that's, when they leave treatment, that's when bad things happen. You know, so the goal is to keep patients engaged in treatment. When we look at some of the goals of treatment, we want to reduce or help them to stop harmful substance use, help to restore the physiological functions, rest improvement in their quality of life, like we want these people to be able to get their driver's license, to pay their fines, right? Like a big part of our program is like, where are you at with your fines? Where are you at following up with your parole officer? Where are you at following up with your probation officer, your community service? You know, like we work with all of these different entities within the community so that we can really set these people up for success. We want to provide the lowest possible barrier, treatment on demand, and most importantly, we want to facilitate their movement towards recovery while adopting new behaviors to support health wellness and purpose. Just as a generalized follow-up, something I really wanted to help you all understand, and one of the reasons why we're coming here today, is, you know, we have a lot of the same goals that you all do. We want the best for our community, Courtney, she lives right here in Lee County. You know, I've lived very closely in Lee County my whole life, I lived in Wise County, I used to live in Scott County, incredibly, going back to Scott County before long. You know, the people that are here, like these, like these are our family members, you know, these are our brothers and sisters, like my kids are going to grow up here. You know, that's why I work in this field, is because my family has been just ravaged by the disease of addiction. And treatment really helps. You know, I'm not saying that patients are going to come to our program, and they're going to be cured, and the world is going to be great, and everything's going to be perfect. But what's guaranteed is when people engage in treatment, they're a more safe, stable, functional version of themselves than if they wasn't. You know, I know there's a lot of talk today about like opiates and opioids, but you will find that it's polysubstance use disorders, like people who use drugs, they don't just use one drug and one drug only, it's a multitude of substances. So you know, if you know anyone in your life who are struggling and needs help, like refer them to treatment, get them to treatment. We do walk-in appointments, we take most insurances, Virginia Medicaid, Medicare, commercial insurance, self-pay patients, we have very, very, very few self-pay patients. You know, and it's not just opiates or opioids. You know, people struggle with methamphetamine, alcohol, sedative drugs, cannabis, you know, whatever it is, if they're struggling with addiction and it's having a negative impact on their life, they can't perform their roles in their life, like holding down a job, taking care of their kids, getting engaged in treatment, it can really help. Thank you for taking the time to listen to us. Do I have any questions? Is there anything I can help with? I know it's a lot of information, and I can be a bit excessive at times.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you, Adrian, that's very informative. Appreciate you guys coming tonight.
Thank you.
Next is Terry Cox. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board for letting me speak a few minutes. My name is Terry Cox, eight ninety-five King Gaff Road, Duffield, in the State of Lee County. I came here February and spoke at last time, and it was about the V Doc Smart Scale application. And I was just wanting to know what the status was on it, if we're going to meet the deadline in August, this section of road eastbound, U S fifty-eight, out of Lee County towards Duffield and Tri-Cities. It scores extremely high with the metrics. It was the last time, it was number three on the Smart Scale program in southwest Virginia from Wickville to Cumberland Gap on the I eighty-one, and Weber City Corridor scored higher. And we appreciate the community does, I've heard nothing but compliments on what the Board did, getting what we have up there for the county, and I've had nothing but positive comments from it. And we still are having some safety issues. They're pacing before they get to the pacing lanes, and we're having heavy truck traffic going across it. You can just name it, the stone trucks going to Kings Ford and Johnson City from the rock quarries. They can buy their stone cheaper in Virginia than over in Tennessee with the Vulcan. And I know for a fact, being in the industry over in Tennessee and Johnson City, that Thomas Construction Company is coming over here, you got Tennessee Companies coming over here buying the stone because it's cheaper than Vulcan. And we've got the big flatbed eighteen-wheelers with their rocks hauling them to South Carolina. I know that one, well, the, all of the big boulders, and this is direction to I eighty-one and twenty-six, and all our advanced healthcare, our jobs, our social activities, and it just scores extremely high, and it would be a game changer for Lee County and for our community. We could open up this eastern end like we did at Mr. Smith's District. We could open up this eastern end like we did at Mr. Smith's district. And Mr., and Mr. Jessie, I'm asking you personally if you could please follow it up and see if we can get this SMART Scale application turned in, and see if we can get it on the six-year primary road list. It scores extremely high, and that's, that's why I'm here.
Anyone have any questions?
Not Mr. Cox, but maybe to Mr. Poe, what is the status of that?
Last call we had on SMART Scale. I did ask VDOT to look at an additional project on the map, at least one additional project, possibly two. As I've explained before, they will not even start work on a project or look at a project for inclusion in SMART Scale unless they have a current cost estimate. And I asked them to begin that process and get a cost estimate. Now, there's a lot that goes into that, and this being mid-July, I don't see any prospect of getting that in a SMART Scale application in August of this year. I think our target should be to look at a project for next year, because first, they've got to have those costs in hand. There is, after the initial two phases of that were approved, I had basically been told by son and VDOT that that was it, there'd been a war. Since that time, I have had some encouragement that they would be willing to look at an additional project, but they still have concerns on the slide activities and things of that nature on the map. So they're gonna have to weigh those factors.
Well, pardon me, but I have to humbly disagree, humbly. If you go to Patrick County and see them moving 10 million cubic yards of earth, I've turned that in. I was in South Boston, Virginia last week. Got to travel 58 for 20 years now. I've got family in Chapel Hill and South Boston. And if you see what they're doing, the Powell Mountain project would be a baby, would be just a little baby. I handed out articles into you, a picture's worth a thousand words.
That's not there to see, Mr. Cox?
Yes, so I'm talking about engineer, and I worked in engineering for over 30 years with brilliant engineers, civil engineers.
So they know to be working on the cost estimate?
Yes. You know, we put a man on the moon and repelled him back to Earth. We can get the road across the mountain if we're committed for our citizens. Thank you, I appreciate your public service, and I appreciate you very much. And hopefully, we can try to get it in there in August. And even if they say no, let's give it a college effort and try, and we'll return back in August. But next August, Lord willing. But Mr. Jesse, please, try to push it to this office. Thank you, thank you for your service.
Next on the agenda is supplemental appropriations.
Mr. Chairman, these are all for the prior year. It's cleaning up individual offices, most of these. It's either additional funding, most of it is additional funding that's come in. There's no way to know to budget that, so this is cleaning that up. There are a total of seven supplemental appropriations. And then on the last page, there's a budget transfer moving $390. At the end of the year, we will, we will use any available funds within the department, regardless what line it is, to keep these lines out of imbalance. In these instances, there's one, two, three, four, five, seven departments for a total of $390 if there simply wasn't enough money within the budget cover to come over itself.
Okay, thank you. I entertain the motion to approve supplemental appropriations.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion in the second, in discussion. If none, all in favor, signify to say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Next on the agenda is old business, county code recodeification.
I have advised the contractor on that, contract firm, to, we want to accept all of the proposed changes. I hope to have the new and amended ordinances that were initially sent to them in their hands by next Wednesday.
What do we have to do after we get them back?
Wait for them to assemble everything.
Who's gonna put it on the website?
That would be part of their project to guide us through that process.
Next is ARPA funding.
The, I've made a little bit of headway on that. The, as far as towns were concerned, those funds were remitted to the state and then made payments to the towns. So instead of going through the feds on this, I've gotta go through the state. I've got a contact at the state that I will be in touch with. Don't think she'd be able to give me an answer on this, but I think she can lead me to the proper department to make that. So hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, I'll have an answer on that.
Is that on both rounds' money?
No, that is just on the ARPA funding. Now, on, we've got the next one marked coded funds, that's actually CARES. There were no funds for towns, so we under CARES. The counties receive CARES funds, we opted, Lee County opted to give a portion of its CARES funds to the incorporated towns based on population. So Johnson and Penney can receive those funds, but since St. Charles was not operating as a town, nothing was transferred, there's no way to transfer it to them, so that's the issue on that one.
Thank you. Next is later judgments.
That's county attorney issue, I don't have anything on that.
Okay. Move on to new business.
Can I?
Go ahead.
Have you heard anything on AT&amp;T? Because I haven't heard anything.
We've got a phone call set up for...
Supplemental IMBS?
Yes. Tomorrow morning, if we'll have, let me send you the...
Yeah, if you would.
Okay. I'll send you the call, and we'll get after that.
Okay. Thank you. Next is board appointments. Building code fields.
Motion to table, please.
Second. Motion in the second, in discussion. All in favor, signify to say aye.
Aye.
Next is lonesome pine office on the Utes, and I have not been able to contact Mr. Cooper. I'll do that vote next meeting. I'll make a motion to table that. Second. Motion in the second, in discussion. All in favor, signify to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next is Southwest Virginia 911 Standards Committee, and there's three appointments on that.
I haven't had time to follow up on my tweet about that yet.
Okay, you want to table that?
Yeah, I make a motion to table those.
Just Mike.
Unless y'all had something to add?
Well...
Unless you do what you want to do.
Just, I'm gonna reappoint Billy Kaye then, thank you. Since Billy Kaye is 911. I make, okay, we got a motion to table, your second.
Second.
Motion in the second, in discussion. If none, all in favor, signify to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. I make a motion to reappoint Billy Kaye calling in, any opposed?
Second.
Got a motion in the second, in discussion. All in favor, signify to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next on the agenda is fire alarm systems.
I've been doing some research on that, to better coordinate the locations of the alarm with the fire department. We determined there are two separate systems. One covers the first and second floors, it's tied to the control panel in the closet downstairs, a locked closet down on the lower level. There's a second system, it's just three alarms on the lower level. It's tied to a control panel located in the dispatch center. I asked Johnson Controls, who is the maker of both systems, either they bought out companies that made the originals, or they were the installers on the other. To provide a quote to repair and/or upgrade current systems to report to one control panel that would be located there in 911 since it's sized 24/7. Right now, then in that case, when an alarm was triggered, there'd always be a dispatcher there who could read the control panel, determine the location of where the alarm was pulled, and advise others accordingly. This would include the fire department. Johnson Controls did provide a quote, a copy of that enclosed, it's $44,500 to upgrade the system, all use of fire alarms and tie them into one new control panel. Currently, right now, if you pull an alarm on the first or second floor, it'll trigger an audible alarm on those two floors. That's the only place you can hear that alarm. And the only way to silence that thing is to go down and gain access to that closet and reset that control panel. Also, he noted that none of those alarms are located at a height that's accessible by wheelchair for ADA compliance. On the first floor, an alarm pulled there triggers an audible alarm and the warning strobe lights throughout the lower level. That alarm can be silenced in the dispatch center on the control panel, and they can read where that location is at, just so you realize. We haven't had an active alarm in the building in over 20 years. We used to get them all the time down on the lower level because there'd be children in social services, and they'd reach up and pull the alarms down, so that... But you have, you have a quote there, whatever actually you want to have those.
I think it's very important that both systems, or both floors are tied together. Because it goes off up here, they'll never hear it down there.
Right. And if it goes off downstairs, you don't hear it upstairs.
So I entertain a motion to approve the upgrade in the system.
Is that the only quote we got, or is there anybody else that works in that space?
Johnson's, we might could find someone else to get a quote.
I didn't know we were gonna be talking to car prices.
Well, I didn't know what it would be. Honestly, I have no idea what kind of cost we would get. We can look and try and get another quote from another vendor. Both of these systems were either Johnson or made by a company that's been since bought out by Johnson.
I think we all spend a little time to see if we can find a chance.
Yeah, I agree. So we don't need a motion on that?
No, no, we'll continue.
Next is sure to run convenience center lease agreement.
We noted that that lease agreement expired in August of 2022, initially provided a five-year renewal term upon mutual consent of both parties. I've been in contact with the property owner. I still do not have a proposal back from them at this point in time. We are paying on a month-to-month basis at this point.
That's on the property itself, right?
Yes.
Okay.
What's your opinion?
Right now, it's a hundred a month.
Next is L Department MOU regarding rabies control response.
Talking about the lease property. We've already approved the, that option. The state code requires the local health director, in conjunction with the local governing body, to adopt a plan to control and respond to the risk of rabies exposure to persons and companion animals. The Lewesco Health District has submitted a memorandum of understanding for adoption of the Lewesco Health District Human and Companion Animal Rabies Exposure Protocol. It's basically what's currently taking place when responding to rabies exposures, but approval and adoption of the MOU will formalize this plan and will satisfy state code requirements. Basically, this fills out what animal control officers will do if they're, if they have a reported bite with any suspected rabies, things that they, the protocol they follow. And I'd say, basically, already following that now, this is formalizing it to satisfy state requirements.
Okay. I entertain the motion for approval with the MOU regarding rabies control response.
Some more.
I have a motion that I hear, second.
Second.
Have a second, in discussion. If none, all those in favor, signify to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next is recommendations of county attorney, she's on vacation. Next is county minister.
Got a quote for sealing and strapping of the parking lot across the street, you know, drugstore parking lot, got that today. I will advise, had Gary Coliforth look at it with me a couple of weeks ago. There's one area over there, it's a depression, about that deep, it's about three feet across. It needs to be filled in really before that's done, it's just in one area. But on the backside of the parking lot, on the post office section over there, back next to the post office, on this west end, there's an area there where it really, the whole thing drops down. There's an area there probably 20 feet across, that it drops down. And it's, there's a little bit of a depression there, and then it gradually rises and goes on out the end of the parking lot. Talked to Gary, got the possibility of getting some coal mix and filling in that pothole. The other, never do that with coal mix. His comment was, you just need to load asphalt and a roller and try to smooth that up. I got the price for sealing and strapping from Jordan Bruins. It just so happened, he was standing over here at the post office last night as I went out the building, and I walked over there and talked to him just a minute. And he said, "Well, I've got your price ready." But he said, "No, that needs some work done before you do that." So I don't know if you want to look at that further before we seal it and strap it, or if you want to go ahead and seal the strip it as is. While, while we were looking at it, I noted, after I contacted him to get us a quote, the strapping, the parking space stripes down on Church Street here that comes down by the courthouse, the one-way street, they're pretty much obliterated. And I've noticed people parking at odd angles since then, and it's because you can't, they can't see the lines. They're not sure exactly how to line it up, and I asked to get your price on that as well. So the price for just the drugstore parking lot for sealing and strapping was $2,300. The price for strapping on Church Street there was $500, which would be a total of $2,800.
Is he in a opinion about how to fix the parking lot?
I mentioned to him what we said, and he said it needs something. He said that really, he said you're just, you've still got a depression on that backside. And I think you probably park right in that area a lot. It's pretty noticeable when you get the parking lot cleared completely out and see how that, the whole thing's dropping down, and it is letting water stand in there. So the more it stands, the more it's gonna drain down through it and create, create a worse problem in the future. It's not a, not a complete fix, but it would level that up and get more plastic drainage.
Since Gary's in here, Gary, do you, do you think that applying to get a load of asphalt and get a roller and rolling that down will fix it?
Well, yeah, I mean, I wouldn't, in my opinion, I wouldn't put money in strapping and sealing it without it being fixed, because then you're, you're basically throwing that away. Because once you do fix it, then you're gonna have to get somebody to come back and seal that section and strap it in. So, and I would do it, I would do it right the first time.
For a 20-foot section and a small section, that shouldn't take a whole lot of asphalt out, would it?
Well, I'm saying that one section was about 20 feet across, but going the other direction is probably about 30 or 30 foot at least.
Yeah. What are they gonna be paying up back here?
I'm not really sure. Everybody keeps asking when they're going, when they're going to be down there working, but, I mean, they are spreading a few items in, I think they've been waiting on their pack and manors, more than anything, they are placed down there now. Their blocks running, so I mean, that's what, substantially complete by mid-September.
It would be a good time, I'm sorry. I was just going to say, I'd consider asking them what they think the best fix is, and I'm not saying let them do it, but at least ask them how they would go about fixing the problem.
Well, I would think, you know, well, I would thought you said, I agree with that, but, you know, they're going to be bringing asphalt in here anyway, they'll have a roller or something, I mean, that'd be a good time to do that. As much as Gary and him's got on their plate, I don't, I keep adding stuff to it.
I've, I've got to them, and I explained to Jordan that if we took the other action, we wouldn't do this immediately, and if he, if he has, if the cost of the delay, he has a cost increase in materials or something, we may have to adjust that.
Was there any reason we couldn't go ahead and do it out here on the one-way street?
We could go ahead and do Church Street, yeah, that's, that could be done anytime.
Well, I know, I was down through here yesterday, and apparently there's no problem with the parking lot over there, because I don't think strapping would be all that urgent, because it's full when I went through there yesterday, so.
You're talking about Cross Street?
Yeah, so they didn't need strapping yesterday, so I think they could wait a little while.
Well, he's talking about down Church.
Yeah, I agree, I say, I agree with him, but I've talked about over there, I mean.
Oh, yeah, they, they got, they got the bump blocks over there, and that's pretty much how everybody lines up, it's on the bump blocks.
Yeah, it was full, I mean, there wasn't any spot when I went through there yesterday, so I wouldn't be so urgent to strip it down anyway.
You want to go ahead and take action to do, do the.
Yeah. Yeah, I make a motion, we go ahead and accept the price of five hundred dollars to strip down the, down Church Street.
I'll say that. I have a motion for the second. Any discussion? All in favor, six, five, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll, I'll check with the contractor on that, that's the one that's doing the parking lot. Got a, and I know the board acted on this, they apparently not aware of it yet, but got a letter Friday from, or yesterday it was, from White Rocks Community Center requesting an appropriation of five thousand dollars to assist them with operation of that center. The board appropriated in the budget twenty-five hundred dollars for each of the centers, so, I mean, we can automatically pay the twenty-five hundred, I'm just making you aware of this for information purposes.
Twenty-five hundred.
Also have a cost estimate, which is called work on the St. Charles Basketball Court. Total on that, that would, this includes the plastic barrier, fourteen yards concrete, the labor performed, placed, finished and sawed, and the outdoor parking registered basketball go, seven thousand one hundred and twelve dollars.
About mid-walk and throw.
I've got Martin's phone number, I'll give him a call.
So we know what he said. I can call Stacy if we want to do it.
Well, I, I talked to Martin about it.
No.
Yeah, I thought we'd finally, you know, said they would do it, when he gets done quickly, so.
You won't write the estimate or anything on there, you're just going to call?
I'll call him, tell him what it is.
What'd you say, seventy-five hundred?
Seventy-one twelve.
Seven?
Assuming prices don't go up before we get ready to do it.
Hopefully we can get to it. Well, there you go.
This is just for information, you'll be seeing an ad within, probably within the next week regarding the county requesting proposals for appraisal work, and this is for the Western Lee Sewer Project Appraisals, easements, needed easements that are going to be done. This, this is all for that project, so it's just something we've got to do as the local sponsor, we have to do the advertising, so.
Sounds like going down there.
Uh, we're, it's moving along, it's moving along better. I think the sixty percent engineering is going to be complete by the middle of August, that's the goal right now, and once we reach that milestone, that opens up a lot more to look forward to start work on. That, that would release us actually to start getting the easement appraisals and things of that nature. The only other thing that I've got, of course, I think you all have provided a letter, it's, it's a grant position, but Donna Cobb, the victim witness advocate, retiring in mid-September, so I think the plan there is that Ms. Taylor, Amy Taylor, will step into that position, and I'm assuming they'll hire someone to assist her.
Who's, who does that, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah.
I hope they had it in the paper, didn't they?
Uh, they, okay, they've already got one in there, yeah. So, the only other thing I have is paint on the walls, so you can bring that over whenever.
Nate, is there any news on the jet fuel?
Uh, I issued him a note to proceed, start, start the clock, so it's going, the clock's running, I didn't get any response back from him, so, or at least I have it today, so.
But he gave you so much time to.
Well, he's got six months to do the project, that's, that's a hundred eighty days is the contract time. He should be able to start, assuming he got the materials that he was waiting on, he should be able to start soon. And he, I wouldn't think it would take the work a hundred eighty days, because he should have everything in hand that he needs, and I'm thinking when he gets down here, and he's not going to drag it out and have to travel time back and forth, he wants to get it done and get it out.
Anything else?
That's all I have, I think.
Next is reports and recommendations of the board. Mr. Smith.
I haven't got.
Mr. Coss.
Furniture and the floor, where did all that go? Did we have a sale this spring? We've been having one this spring.
Uh, well, we didn't, most of that was damaged, I think it all was damaged, and when it was even moving, when they took it apart, it started breaking apart, pieces were broke off of it, so all of that was discarded. We do have some down there that we are going to put in storage to sell, but that's what came out of Commissioner's office, it's in much better condition, so that will be selling.
What about the cop mission?
Uh, we had an offer on that, or we priced it at fifty dollars, and a guy looked at it and went and bought it, so.
What was your price?
And he came by one day, wanted to sell, we sold. There was a couple of other things down there that we sold, but I did a little research on it, I mean, it's an outdated screen, and you've got no support or anything else, but.
So do we still have it or not?
No, no, it's, it's gone.
Okay. What about the John May real estate, the real estate people wanted John May?
Uh, I've got that list for her. Stacy was out two weeks with carpal tunnel surgery, and she's on vacation this week, but she'll have all that in her inbox when she's back.
I thought we already told her what to do, she was just supposed to do the deed.
Well, again, she was off, I think after that instruction, she was out at least two weeks on her carpal tunnel surgery.
Can you follow up with her on that?
I will.
They've been trying to give us land for a year.
Yeah.
What about the ad for the county admin, or assistant county admin?
I want to talk to you about how wide you want that, how you want it at square, how wide you want from the ad.
I'd say certainly Kingsmore, Bristol, local, I'd say Coalfield. I probably wouldn't go in front of that.
I had planned to list it on the Laco website.
Maybe the, what's the online one we used a while back?
Uh, we.
Superco?
Indeed, I don't remember if it was.
I give.
I forget which one, we didn't, didn't get much response on that, but we can try again.
Virginia employment commission, that's free. What do you want for? I couldn't hear you much, though. Said Virginia employment commission is free, but I, I, I wouldn't go in front of the Bristol. Would you?
No.
Was there anything else we need to talk about on that note?
Uh, no, what I'll do when I have the final version drafted, I'll email it to everybody, see if everybody's good with it.
What about, we were going to check on AT&T phones for the county employees.
I've got a phone call set up on that. I, I talked to them the last time we were on the MBO call and asked them to get me a contact, so that I didn't have to go through a bunch of, a bunch of different contacts to get to the right person, and it was about two or three weeks before he got me somebody, but we, and then that guy was off on vacation this week, so we've got a call set up for next week.
On the painting downstairs and upstairs, did we come up with what the paint was when we used it last time?
Uh, I just don't want to hold it up on what they had. What I'd asked them to do in the old part, when they were going down the starter well, is to match the paint with what they had painted that upstairs section is when it crossed over into the old section. They took a piece of paint and they got a piece off the wall and took a third wall mark to get them to match the paint. It didn't come out quite the same. And, which I didn't notice when I went by, started, I didn't notice the orange, it was a little darker than what I thought it should be, but I think it's where all that light comes in, you get, different hues of color in it. And then when, once you started down, the clerk asked if the paint on that lower section, the first floor, a different color than that, she wanted something lighter, she said, well, that's the same color what's on the wall. It's not white, you can see where the break is, but it, it's just a little bit lighter than what they got down there.
But it's pink, I mean, it's, it's pink paint on a tanned brick.
Well, it's, it's not pink on the thing, I, I will tell you, I painted my basement gray once, and I was using floodlights and stuff to paint with. When I turned the fluorescent lights on, it was purple. That's, that's the color you got. You had to get a certain way, you could look at it one light and it was gray, the other light, it was purple. So I had to get a different shade and repaint it.
Well, when the board, we walked down through there before one meeting, or during one meeting, it picked out two colors, it was a gray, I don't remember what it was called.
The gray is what we used back down there.
Yeah, but I think we used it on down through there a little bit, then we switched to a tan, but we picked out two, point is, do they not have the, the paint can, or did they knock right down to the?
I don't know if they got leftover paint on that or not, I'll check with them.
I think we need to find that out, then.
That's why, my instructions were was to match what they, what they painted the other, get the same paint. Part of the, I don't know if they had any, I know they had some old paint and stuff down there, so there's supplies down in that storage room in the back corner, and I'll look down there tomorrow and see if they got any of that paint.
So, Renee's color, you have it?
She's, she picked out a color that she wanted, and then I had asked one person from the Commissioner's office, one from the Treasurers, and one from our office, to get together and decide on the color coming down the rest of the way. They wanted a gray, I don't, they hadn't picked out a shade yet, the only thing I did here, I think, they did want, they preferred a shade just a little lighter than what's up here. They didn't want a dark gray. But I did not have them pick out any paint samples.
Oh, maybe they can do that before we line in on that.
I mean, they, they talked about it the day I talked, I asked the Treasurer and Commissioner to appoint one, and I appointed one, they talked about it that day, and they'd already decided what shade they wanted, just not the exact color.
Are you doing it?
Yeah.
Is it pink or salmon or anything like what we're doing?
Well, I mean, that, no, it's going to be gray. Up here, we just need to get back to a beige or something.
Why don't we just go with one color all the way through?
Because the floor, the floor changed and it's down here is brick. I don't remember if you walked in there, I remember.
They didn't walk down there.
Me and Charlie, we picked out two, two colors and marked them in game of the works program.
He's got some built-in features in the old part of the building that has color to it that is different than the new part. Brick and, and the tile floor, I mean, the, the second floor where it's all poured, poured out of the floor.
White goes with everything out of here.
White, white is a pain to keep clean on a wall, it is a finger mark.
It would be no, it would be no different than a light gray.
Well, not, not, not real, real light, I don't, I'll see what they pick out, if I think it's too light.
If somebody's going to make it dirty, they're going to make it dirty and don't matter what color it is.
Somebody suggested to me that we put our phone numbers on the website, that we have our addresses on there for available, but we don't have our telephone numbers on there. I would be okay with my office number being on there, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks about that, but.
We, we release phone numbers per instructions of the board members. Addresses we'll make available, but phone numbers, we ask them, and same with email addresses, we don't necessarily publish on, unless board member agrees to.
I'll agree with my phone number being on there. Any other takers?
I thought we already got our numbers on there, no?
Well, I thought so, that's what I said, I said they're on there, and she said, no, they're not, and I pulled it up, and she was right, she said, you have to call the county administrator's office and ask for the phone number, it's on the website.
Oh, I thought they were already on there.
And we have, we, we, I have contacted every board member and asked if they wanted the number released, so I have that in.
We all have them released, don't we? The number is just off the website?
No, no.
Oh, we don't?
No.
If somebody calls, they leave a number and they'll be called back.
Last thing I had was a building inspector, in his report, he listed several things that he found when he looked around at the buildings. I kind of thought we ought to put some of that on a list to tackle. But as far as the Ag Building, what was the name of it, Appalachian Sustainable Development?
Uh, yes.
They, part of the grant they were trying to get was to fix the building, so I wouldn't spend any kind of money on that, which is used to handle, but some of those other things I thought we should probably try to address. Joe, look at it.
I looked at some of it.
Some of it was pretty enough, a little bit of the structural stuff, I thought we ought to address it.
Well, as far as the sanding and the painting and stuff, the work program.
That's what I thought.
You know, Gary and him got, they've got a lot to do here. And we just stated no talking phones tonight. And that's something else I'd like to bring up, but I talked to Gary, Gary thinks it would be better to say that if he did that work down there at the airport in November, when everything's dead and you can see the rocks, and he says he'd take the excavator down there and grub it, instead of just putting it, let it grow back.
I'm probably.
You all are at that, do we need to make a motion on that, Mr. Coss?
Since we had a motion to set a deadline, I would prefer to have.
Well, I'd like to go ahead, I'd like to redress that and make a motion to, I mean, I know the city wanted a deadline date on that, and I even talked to Gary about that also, and, you know, if you want a deadline, we can make it November the thirtieth if you want to put a deadline on, deadline on, but with what all he's got to do between now and November, he's going to be lucky to get all that done, but.
Well, it's just a target, I mean, you know, sometimes we all have projects we want to get done, and they seem like they're just like, just like the St. Charles thing, you've been trying to get that done for two years with the ball court.
Well, we didn't have a help.
Well, no, but I'm just saying that sometimes other projects, like the ball court District One, it costs four times as much as it's in front of this one in St. Charles. We just need to all agree on how to prioritize things, but somebody's project, get in front of somebody.
But I think with what, you know, I, I say, I, I visited Gary yesterday for a little while and looked at a couple of his projects that, that he really needs to do yesterday. while and looked at a couple of his projects that, that he really needs to do yesterday. They really need to be done before, but get down there, and he thought that, I had Gary back here, so, uh, am I not right? You said it probably, you know, in November, you should have those projects played by, he'll be able to get down there and do a better job with it down there.
Yeah, and not that we wouldn't cut some of it, but with there not being any vegetation on it, there's some of it we could grub and not be growing right back next year. We could grub root gnaw on some of it. Some of it we would still have to brush, but at least we could see what we're doing with, you know, leave down on it, which would just be a better, be a better winter project. Uh, with full staff, I could, you know, put a couple of us down there working on that, and November, December, we're kind of starting on dumpster, a couple up here, a couple down there, and keep, keep busy on it.
I'm probably good with it.
We don't need a motion on that, Mr. Carter?
We don't, no, we don't have it.
All right. Anything else we've got?
Could we put, Mr. Carter, you tell them to, the Works Program to work on some of this, and you kind of prioritize what, maybe get with Gary and see what things the Work Program's capable of on Mr. Carter's list?
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll make the, I'll go through and make a sheet on it, and then we'll start parting it out, who could do what.
He mentioned something about St. Charles Fire Hall. Does the county own it?
Yes. Not, not where they're at now, the, the old one across from the school. That's where, uh, MBO's at, up there.
The old building, I turned it around.
I, I'd give you my recommendation on that.
Now, city, what, what I had talked about, and I think you and I talked about, you probably forgot, but that's the reason I keep pushing to see if we can get those funds recovered that the town should have gotten, to where we can tear that thing down, and that will go a long ways toward putting a new metal building there for it, to house a fire truck over there and add the rescue squad, because it's outside.
Well, my, as far as that building and the county's use of that property, I thought was tear the building down and get nothing else, just build a small block building back to put that equipment in.
Well, I mean, whether it's cheaper, right?
Yeah, and you know, I don't even know, uh, I got plenty about that. They, they don't have a building to put these others up, and I don't, I don't understand why they had to put that equipment inside that building.
I think it was just the easiest location. That's as far as they had the fiber run.
Okay, well...
Because it wasn't built any further than that yet.
Okay, well, I think it is, but, but, uh, I, I would just put something back, just big enough to hold the water equipment, it's easy there and...
But they need a truck stored over, and I've talked to, uh, I've talked to Brian Skidmore, you know, several times about it, and he says as soon as, you know, you know, we can get something safely built over there, that, you know, he could, he could house a truck over there, so they'd have it readily available over there.
Okay.
And then, you know, like I say, we could have the rescue squad, because they have no place to store their unit.
So, you say leave it until we figure out if we're gonna get rid of it, don't do any repairs to it for now?
I wouldn't. I mean, that place is pretty. Have you ever been in it? It ain't worth, it ain't worth salvage.
What about the town aisle, who owns it?
Well, the rescue squad uses that, you know. That's the old jail building.
Right.
Yeah, they use it.
What they use it for?
To run rescue.
Do, do they have a place they can park their vehicle over there?
Just outside.
That's a two-story building, isn't it?
Yeah. The office is upstairs, the bottom load, and I think it's just probably storage or something, because it's, it's low ground. It's right there on current.
Yeah, I know.
In their community, none of their...
Uh, no, I've never been there.
I've never been in the bottom load.
I've never been in it.
The top of it, the town had their offices up there, and I think that's all what the rescue squad uses.
Only other thing I had Clint recommend, we trim that big tree outside the head and start building, get rid of it. I'd say get rid of it, it'd be cheaper to get rid of it.
Yeah, in the long run. We cleared several of those over there around the Ag Building. There was one behind it that was, it was eight, cleared it. I didn't have anything to do with it, I didn't tell them the way it cut. It was one that was leaning head towards that adjacent house, and once they got it down, we looked at it, I'd say take them all down, because they were, it was on the roof of that building, and, uh, so...
It looks a lot better.
All those have been cleared out, so...
Do you think you all could cut that down, Gary? Do y'all think you, think you could get that cable down?
Why, so, can you? What about the building? They probably don't get shit in it.
No, it's not. Tear it down, kind of building, but it's a lot. I recommended they would sell the thing. I mean, it's probably a forty-five, fifty-thousand piece of property, it's a lot, but... You all okay with cutting it?
Yeah.
I make a motion.
Yeah, that's what needs it.
Then we cut the, cut the tree, it needs it.
All right.
It would need to tear the house down, the tree.
Mr. Carter?
I got a question. Are you talking about the big one in front, or the big one right beside it?
I was really talking about the one on the east side, but really, they both need to come out. What do you think?
I, I just, I just remembered these two from...
Yeah, I forgot to tell you. I, I meant to on the east side, but I know that Clint specified which one he was talking about.
Which totally covered.
Yeah, he said on the east side.
Had the whole top of it's covered in limbs and stuff, right off the top, off the way, probably.
Yeah, yeah. Can we vote on that?
Cut the tree.
I say it is. I'll vote we voted on it or not.
We did. Got a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. That's another job, Gary. Got a job security power.
I asked you if you could do it, and you could've said no.
Well, I wasn't a lot.
Uh, Mr. Jesse, you have anything? Mr. Linder?
No, sir.
Uh, I was sitting here thinking, Mr. Carter, when we get this fire system in, the lawns, we need to have a fire drill. We're probably not been a fire drill in this building ever. And you'd have to do it before a court.
And, and like I said, I can recall when I first started, first couple of years, first two or three years, we had a few times that thing would go off because somebody would pull them. Like, always some kid reached out and pulled them downstairs, and nobody paid any attention to them. First thing I was saying, because I was the new kid on the block, and, and the employees that were here said, "Ah, somebody down some service just pulled that alarm." And sure, they could go down there and get it.
I just suggest that's not, that's not having a fire drill during court meetings, so.
Well, not during the court either. I mean, that, is that, that could be a problem, though.
Well, yeah, we could, we could, you know, notify everybody and just give them, make, make people aware of the exit patterns and...
Yeah, I was gonna say, we need a, a evacuation plan.
Yeah.
Wherever you're at, this is where you need to go, and stay off the elders. That's all I have. Uh, in motion, motion. Oh, yeah.
I make a motion going to close session pursuant to two point two dash thirty seven eleven, sub eight, one personnel, re-acquisition disposition, realty, seven, threat or penalty litigation, twenty-nine contracts.
Second.
Motion in the second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Good night, Chad.